We will call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. Roll call, please. Vice Mayor Powers, here. Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Shelton.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz.
Here.
Mayor Payne, here. I would invite you to join me in a moment of silent prayer and following that, we will have the salute to the flag by Boy Scout Troop 498.
Color guard advance. Color guard, prepare to coast to colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the due respect, we declare one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Two. Color guard, coast to colors. The audience. The color guard dismissed. The audience may be seated.
I would ask the city clerk to go ahead and read the video statement. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Shorewest Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record. At this time, I would ask for agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we would like to pull item D-12 off the consent calendar just for the purposes of substituting a new amendment number two and a new resolution.
But we are going to omit D-12.
No, no, admit it. I want to pull it off the consent just for the purposes to substitute.
Okay. Thank you. Any other deletions or corrections? If not, I would ask you to read the consent calendar, please. About public comment first. Oh. Yep, public comment. Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. Al Baldwin.
Good evening, Al Baldwin. And yes, I am concerned about what goes on in Galt a lot, but it's a pleasure because it's a community of character and I enjoy that. There's one announcement I want to make and that's all, be within three minutes, I hope. We're going to have a, I'm representing the Galt Historical Society and we're going to have a car show this next Sunday, which is the 25th. So if you're watching this, it's going to be at the McFarland Ranch and you just go down Oar Road and if you need to know how to get there, just ask anybody in Galt. I think they know where it's at. I have maps if somebody in the audience would like to see it. But it's going to start at 11:00. It's going to end around 3:00. It's 1942 and older. These are not modified. These are original. A lot of work goes into these. We're going to have quite a few of them. We do it every year. It's going to be $5 donation for adults, kids or children nine to 13. It's only going to be $2 and eight and under, you get in free. So that's pretty cool for them. And we're going to have a drawing and it's going to be, you're going to, when you buy this ticket, you're going to be qualified for that drawing of $100. And it, prizes are going to be going on from 11:30 to 2:30. There'll be other tickets you can buy and it's going to be a fun event. It always is. There's lots of food. There's tri-tip, hot dogs, pies, so much food, you just can't eat it all. You have a lot of celebrities there, like people on the council and known celebrities throughout Galt. We even have some of the families of the celebrities that'll be there. I hope Randy's is. Maybe not. Okay, he's been doing it every year for a long time. We miss him if he isn't there. And I think Barbara and you might be there. Mary Lou might be there. I don't know if you'll ride your bike down there, but you know, Mike might be there. Mike over here, we got two Mikes now. You know.
I'm a Mark.
Oh, 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 Mark, I'm sorry, two Marks, two Ms. Yeah, M and M. That's the way I got it.
They're interchangeable.
And Mary Lou. That's three Ms. Oh, gosh, we keep going. We got M for mayor. That's four Ms. What am I thinking? It's going to be, if you just go down Twin Cities Road and go to Christiansen and turn left, you can't turn right, and just go down to Oar Road and turn right, you just keep going straight and you can't miss it. But nevertheless, that's what's going to be happening. Bring your cameras, by the way. These cars are colorful. They're, they're just wonderful to look at. You can touch some of them. The owners will be there. I'll be announcing, I'll be telling you about every car that's out there and what it's doing and what it looks like and who owns it. And any questions you have, just come to the announcing table if you don't know where you're at or where to go. We have a nice home out there, McFarland Ranch, that you can probably go through. The tours don't cost anything, so you can just look at the, this is amazing, by the way, if you happen to go through it. It's, it's just restored beautifully. They have wallpapers, brand, it's all like it used to be, without the people. So nevertheless, come on down when you can, bring your kids, have a fun day. There'll be some vendors down there, be selling things, a few of them. It's just a fun day for the whole family. It's a family event, really. We've had this for 21 years. It's the 21st anniversary of this car show in Galt, so I think you'll enjoy it. Thank you very much.
Al, have you ordered cool weather for that event?
Well, yes, we did. Since you brought it up and I got three seconds, but we'll, we'll stop on the, the weather is going to be less, it's going to be cooler than it is today, tomorrow, and the next day, and it starts a cooling trend because we requested it way ahead of time. This is not something you have to, you know, wish for. It's going to happen. There'll be a little breeze there. Even if I'm there, there'll be only a little hot air.
I, I get it, Al.
What?
I get it, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thanks, Al.
At this time, I would like to ask if you would read the consent calendar, please. Items one through 11 excluding 12, which is up for discussion. One is subject Minutes of the Special and Regular Meetings of September 6, 2011. Two, City of Galt Warrants. Three, Ordinance Number 2011-13 of the City Council of the City of Galt Adopting Chapter 2.90 of the Galt Municipal Code Regarding the Beautification Committee. Four, Ordinance Number 2011-14 of the City Council of the City of Galt Adopting Chapter 2.95 of the Galt Municipal Code Regarding the Public Safety Committee. Five, Ordinance Number 2011-15 Amending Chapter 5.18 of the Galt Municipal Code Repealing Section 5.18.015 Regarding Definitions for Bingo Parlers. Six, Galt Giving Projects Thanksgiving Basket Giveaway. Seven, Appropriation of the Northern California City Self-Insurance Fund, Grant Funds for Purchase of Exercise Equipment for the Police Department Fitness Room. Eight, Proclamation Proclaiming 2011, the 100 Year Anniversary of Women Having the Right to Vote. Nine, Proclamation Recognizing Red Ribbon Week. Ten, Treasures Report for Period Ending July 2011. And eleven, Galt Historical Society Equipment Request. If there is no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve this portion of the consent calendar.
And we accept.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please. Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye.
Consent calendar passed unanimously. And Mr. Holliday, would you like to speak to item number 12?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This item concerns the contract with Valley Operators who are serving as temporary management for the treatment plant following the vacancy of that position back in May. As presented to council, we had amendment number two, which extended the contract term through the end of the year and removed the cap on the expenditure. As the intent of going forward with this is to utilize the savings from that vacant salary position to pay for these services, as it has happened over the last several months, we felt it prudent to revise both the amendment and the resolution to include that cap. And so I substituted, just for clarity, the staff report includes that language, so our intent was clear. We just thought it was better to actually include that language in the amendment itself and the resolution. So I provided each of you with a copy of the revised amendment and the resolution. We're asking that be read or substituted to the record.
Are there any questions or discussion on that? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, vote, please. Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye.
Motion is passed unanimously. We will now go to the presentation. First presentation of the Young Marines, Chris Warwick.
Good evening, Mayor Payne and members of the council. My name is Jacob Warwick and I'm a sergeant in the, for the Galt Young Marine Cobras. And also with me today are some of my fellow young Marines. They are Corporal Nathan Medina, TFC Edinson, Private Betancourt, Lance Corporal Trenton Court, Corporal Seth Medina, Private Carbone, Private Williams, and TFC Trevor Dutcha. The purpose of our visit is to speak to you about an annual Nationwide Drug Awareness Campaign that our Young Marine Unit participates in and hopefully get your help with this project. Corporal Nathan Medina is going, is now going to tell you a brief his, history about Red Ribbon Week.
Hi, I'm Young Marine Corporal Nathan Medina from the Galt Young Marines. I'm going to tell you a story about Special Agent Enrique Camarena. In February 1985, an 11-year veteran of the Drug Enforcement Administration by the name of Special Agent Enrique Camarena was kidnapped, brutally tortured, and murdered by Mexican drug lords. Special Agent Camarena had served in the United States Marine Corps and joined the DEA after he completed active duty service as a Marine. He was working undercover in Guadalajara, Mexico, that was close to exposing in a multi-billion dollar drug operation that was bringing illegal drugs into our country. His tragic death opened eyes of many Americans about the dangers and international scope of the illegal drug trade. After his death, the United States Congressmen and some high school, high school classmates of Special Agent Camarena established Camarena Clubs in his California home zone. The members of these clubs wore red ribbons and pledged themselves to lead drug-free lives in memory of Special Agent Camarena. Other communities in California learned about these clubs and this cause, is the cause and the Red Ribbon concept grew throughout California and eventually spread all across the United States. Now, Private First Class Ednison will give you more information about Red Ribbon Week.
Thank you. The Red Ribbon Campaign garnered national recognition in 1988 with our President and Mrs. Ronald Reagan serving as honorary chairpersons. The United States Congress officially, officially established Red Ribbon Week in that same year. Red Ribbon Week is now celebrated annually in the last week of October. This campaign is the oldest and largest drug awareness and prevention outreach in our nation. This campaign reaches millions of Americans each year. We are here today to ask you and for you to ask your families to help us celebrate the life of Special Agent Camarena. Special Agent Camarena had a vision of a drug-free America. He was killed at the age of 37, leaving behind his wife and three small children. He died in a war against illicit drugs and fighting to keep these substances out of our communities. Every year, we honor the memory of Special Agent Camarena and we want your help in keeping Special Agent Camarena's vision and mission alive. Private Betancourt, will you explain how you can participate in Red Ribbon Week and what you can do to assist us in your school?
One thing that you can do to help with the Red Ribbon Week is to wear a red ribbon on your person from now through the end of the month of October. In addition to wearing the red ribbon, you need to share the story of Special Agent Camarena. Tell those that ask you about your red ribbon that you are keeping the vision of a drug-free America alive. Tell them that you have made a commitment to live a drug-free lifestyle. To help you with this task, we have a red ribbon for each of you to remind you of the story behind this event. We want you to tell everyone you know about Special Agent Camarena and his, as well as our, vision of a drug-free America. Please jo, join with us and become a part of the generation that will work hard to make Special Agent Camarena's drug-free America vision a reality. Thank you, Private Betancourt. I would like everybody to repeat after me. I will be drug-free.
I will be drug-free.
On behalf of my fellow young Marines, thank you for the opportunity to tell you about Red Ribbon Week and a real American hero, DAA Special Agent Kiki Camarena.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Chris Warwick. I'm the Executive Officer of the Galt Young Marine Cobras. I'd like to thank Councilmember Shelton for inviting us to come down here. Our main focus in this group, which is youth ages eight to 18, male and female, is to keep kids off drug and drug demand reduction. We meet twice a month, usually at the Galt Police Department, the first and third Saturdays of the month. We go out and do community service. Each of our young Marines is required to do 50 hours a year of community service, but we are the focal point of the Department of Defense Drug Demand Reduction for Youth Organizations. So we are going around to the different communities that we represent, Galt, Elk Grove, we're meeting before the Board of Supervisors and letting them know what Red Ribbon Week is about. Our young Marines are going into the schools to give the same presentation to their peers in the schools, encouraging them to say no to drugs, to stay off drugs, alcohol, and tobacco, because we know that will lead down the road to different things that we don't want our kids to be involved with. So these leaders of our community are out there making a difference and we just thank you for having us here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. If you will stay there, we have a proclamation. Okay. The City of Galt is very proud to issue this proclamation, which I will read now. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drugs, drug use, and those that traffic them, and whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our community. And whereas the Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent, who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction of, and reduction efforts. And whereas, October 23rd through the 31st has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the City of Galt, California, that we do hereby proclaim October 23rd through the 31st as Red Ribbon Week. And the City of Galt, California, and urge all citizens to join us in this special observance.
May I suggest something? Could we ask the mayor and the marine, young Marines to come right here and you can take a picture? Is that, if that's okay with council? Yeah, that way you guys can stand right here and get a wide-angle lens there. No, I was talking, Al's the one with the camera all the time, so that way if you can just get a shot there. Thanks. Maybe, here, we've got a iPhone here.
iPhone will do it.
Now, one, but if you take one more step forward, you will be.
Yeah.
Thank you, young Marines.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation, Proclamation Proclaiming 2011 as the 100 Year Anniversary of Women Having the Right to Vote. Do I have Charity Kenyon, Mike Eaton, and Roseanne Chamberlain, please? The City of Galt, whereas in 1911, Proposition 4, Constitutional Amendment Number Eight, was placed on the October 10th, 9/11, 1911, excuse me, special election ballot, giving California women the right to vote. And whereas California women campaigned across the state, stopping in rural counties and cities, gaining support from local women and men as a main part of their strategy. And whereas the hard work of strong local suffragists and their male supporters garnered through yes votes to pass Proposition 4. And whereas the city, of cities of Sacramento County, which collectively proudly cast yes votes by a 3.2% margin to counteract the no votes of their counterparts in some large cities. And whereas the Sacramento County vote helped California become the sixth state to give women the right to vote. And whereas 2011 marks the 100th anniversary of California women having the right to vote. And whereas women's rights states like California were instrumental in getting the 19th Amendment passed nationally in 1920. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the City Council of Galt and the County of Sacramento and State of California does hereby proclaim, proclaim 2011 as a year of celebration of the 100 Year Anniversary of California Women's Rights to Vote.
Sure, Al, thank you. I, I do appreciate this recognition, or we do appreciate it, and I think it's wonderful that you pointed out that it is the rural votes in California that put the 19th Amendment in our Constitution. And, and of course, now we have a mayor and a vice mayor that are women, a city clerk that's a woman, who would have dreamed it 100 years ago. And my mother-in-law here, Lillian Eaton, is the former president of her League of Women Voters and also the former mayor of her town in Yukapa. So we do appreciate, we are going to celebrate all year. We've been celebrating. On October 27, Eleanor Roosevelt is coming to Sacramento to help us celebrate and we're having a one-woman play marking that anniversary at the, the Community Center in Curtis Park, October 27. So that should be fun and I hope you can come, including the mayor and the vice mayor and all the people have good reason to celebrate.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yay.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Wow, quite, quite a night of presentations. Thank you all for coming and we appreciate your being here. Moving on to business. The next item will be City Council Office's Strategic Plan. The City Council met some time ago to put together their strategic plan for the next three years. And we update everybody to let you know if we're moving towards those goals or, or not. So we will look at that and kind of fill you in on where we are today. Yep, please. Yep, okay. And we're only going to highlight some of them. Some of these items have been completed, some of them are work in progress, so we're just going to touch base on a few of them. This one is Enhanced Economic Development, number three. This item presents to existing local businesses results of the Buxton Market and Site Analysis, which I know Sandy made a presentation to the Chamber of Commerce luncheon. And we will continue to meet with other business people. Did you want to say something, Sandy, about that?
I do, we have since this update was given, we have set the meeting to present it to the larger business community and we'll be advertising that extensively. The meeting will be October 19th, 8:00 a.m. at the Police Building Community Room. So we urge all local retailers and businesses to come and find out the new tools that will be available to them and we'll go through that in depth.
Okay, so it's open to the public. It's directed towards mostly the businesses, local businesses, so you're all welcome to attend. Okay, next item. This is item number seven, under Enhanced Economic Development, one of our goals, ensure completion of environmental infrastructure studies to prepare the Simmerhorn Commercial Property for Development. That was one of the priorities that Buxton Consulting Group mentioned, that that's an area that would be a good area to develop. Do you want to add something to that, Sandy?
Never give up an opportunity. This is the property between Simmerhorn and Basau Roads- Um, this is the property between Simmerhorn and Basau Roads, uh, just east of Highway ninety-nine. It's vacant, a lot of the ramps from Central Belt Interchange will be going through there. Um, the city is looking at, we're doing the utility studies, the traffic study, and the California Environmental Quality Act study, so that we can get the property pretty much shovel-ready for any developers that might come in. So as we're pursuing national retailers, uh, we will have a real easy place for them to immediately locate, has great highway visibility, and we think that's a great retail site.
And I think we've heard from business people that that's what they want. They want to be able just to move in and start going.
And we're talking to a- to a commercial broker right now that has some interest in that property, so we're working quickly to get that work done.
And are we still on target for January fifteenth, twenty-twelve?
Yes, we are.
Completion? Great, okay. Next item is what, number four, under attract, develop, and retain quality staff. We'll go back to number one, I skipped it. We'll go back and catch it, but we'll go on with number four. Create a citywide training program calendar and present the city manager for review and funding approval for the training. Did you already have that, Paula?
And the city manager, Jason, rolled that out to the employees in September. I mean, yeah, September second, that's the meeting.
What kind of training did you have? Just a little description?
There's a variety, um, we have Libert-Cassidy Consortium, where supervisors can be trained in a variety of areas. But being brought here to the city, we'll have an Excel computer class, and we have customer service, and also, um, let's see, a wide- we have a wide variety. I think there was a class on bloodborne pathogens, just a wide variety. But mainly for all the employees, we have customer service, and then emotional intelligence is one of the newer ones.
I know that was one of our main priorities, was to always improve our customer service to our citizens. Thank you. Moving back up to number one. Contingent upon city manager approval, present to the City Council, implement the proposed job shadowing program. And I believe we've done that as well, haven't we?
Presentation to all the employees, September second, that will be rolling out November first. So employees are encouraged to sign up and start the program.
We have two employees so far that have signed up.
That's good. And I think the council members got a copy of that, of your plan, and that was very well done. Thank you. Okay, next is increased community engagement. And I have asked our police chief to talk about the TIP four-eleven program. Update us on that.
Mayor, we're currently set to roll out the Citizen Observer for TIP four-one-one system in October. That will be able to give information to the public directly from the Police Department almost immediately regarding emergency situations, um, including traffic. Uh, we also have a portion in there to advise you of community events, such as we learned, uh, that's coming up in the next couple of weeks. Uh, that is scheduled for October. We will be going through a training period, uh, the end of this month. We have certain people as far as what we call administrators, as far as the system, that will be able to give this information out, so we're right on target to start that system.
And our completion date is October first, I believe?
Well, we'll be up and running by October first. Uh, but we have to start the process as far as for the citizens in the community signing up. You can be, uh, signed up and you'll be going to the website. And in doing so, you'll be able to get that information through your computer, your cellphone. If you don't want to be logged in, as far as the Police Department, you can get the information from YouTube, Facebook, and Twitter. So you can get the information of the three social medias and have all the information as far as what's going on in the City of Galt.
Thank you. And the next item, number two. One of the things that we are always trying to do is communicate better throughout the community. And that item is to add a couple more, um, community event signs. We've had one located at Community Park at Carillion and Walnut that seems to have been appreciated by the citizens. So we're looking at adding a couple more. And we're always happy to get input. Uh, we- we request input from the citizens. If you have your ideas where you think that would be the most effective. Did you want to make any comments on that, city manager?
We'll be bringing that one back in November with appropriation of funds and the possible locations for the council's consideration.
Great, thank you. Next. Provide services and facilities responsive to community needs. We're going to look at item number three. Develop and implement an online park. Is that correct? Uh, and recreation application payment and registration program. Uh, that should be completed by October first. So I would ask how are we- how are we doing on that one?
We're still scheduled to have it operational in October. Not sure if it's going to be October one, but closely, closely following that, we should be ready to do some testing and have it rolled out to the public. It's going to be a real tremendous benefit to members of the community to be able to go online, register for any of our classes, pay using a credit card. And we're looking forward to it.
Thank you. And item number five. Submit grant applications for safe routes to school, regional surface transportation program, bike pedestrians, congestion mitigation, air quality, and community design. You want to talk about that a little bit? That's a lot of words.
Uh, that is a- just a partial list of the many grants that, opportunities for funding that come to the city over- over the course of the year. These are the basically Saicog Call for Projects, and we have submitted grants, applications for a number of those, as in the safe routes to school, community design, bike ped, and regional, local funding. Uh, and so we're waiting to hear back on those grants.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I see we have, looks like some high school students in our audience. And when you think you get out of school, you don't have to have report cards. Let me tell you that that happens even here at the City Council, and hopefully we're doing well. So we'll go through. The next item on the agenda, under the City Attorney's Office, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Galt adopting Chapter two-point-nine-seven of the Galt Municipal Code regarding the Commission on Aging.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As the council's aware, we've been going through a process of adopting ordinances, establishing the rules and regulations for our various commissions and committees. And I promise this is the last one before you tonight. Uh, this one relates to the Commission on Aging. And the ordinance presented to you tonight continues the existing purpose of the Aging Commission, which is to act as a forum for any and all matters of concern to senior citizens of the city. Uh, the Commission will continue to have five members and one alternate member. The Commission will be able to adopt bylaws, subject to being submitted to the City Council for review and approval. Uh, the Commission is encouraged to meet on a monthly basis. And as with the other commissions and committees, uh, this ordinance includes a provision that provides for an annual report to the City Council, providing a summary of their work for the past year, uh, planned work for the upcoming year, and any recommendations they desire to make to the council. So with that summary, uh, this item is presented to you tonight. The recommended action is to introduce the ordinance, adopting Chapter two-point-nine-seven of the Galt Municipal Code regarding the Commission on Aging, waive the full reading of the ordinance, and continue the matter to the next regular meeting of the City Council.
Thank you. Uh, I would like to this time though, show or mention that we have two of our volunteers on the Commission on Aging Committee sitting in the audience. If you two would stand up so people could recognize you if they have any questions or, um, ideas on how we can serve our senior citizens better. These are the people you need to go see. Thank you so much.
I just want to add that there are two very hard-working women in this community. They've been serving our community for a very long time, and I've had the pleasure of working with both of them in my organization. And they're just wonderful human beings.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next item, please. Oh, yeah, I guess we better come. Is there a motion to, um, to introduce this ordinance and waive the full reading of the ordinance and continue the matter to the next regular meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Hold on a second.
We have a first and a second, roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously, and again, thank you, Commission on Aging, for being here tonight. Okay, Cultural and Recreation Department, the subject, Lighting of the Night Parade Request.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, staff has received two different route requests for the two thousand and eleven Lighting of the Night Parade that will take place on December third, two thousand and eleven. But before we discuss the routes, I would like to discuss some of the changes that we have made to that night. The city will now hold its City Thoughts Christmas Performance and Tree Lighting in coordination with the start of the parade, uh, that night. It'll start approximately at six PM here on the corner of Civic and C Street. The city has also teamed up with the Hospice of San Joaquin to present the first annual Hospice Tree Lighting. Um, I will now direct you, uh, your attention to the Finance Director, Inez Kuriu, to, uh, discuss our teaming with Hospice.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and community members. Um, I- this evening we wanted to present, um, and see if the City of Galt would be interested in joining or sponsoring the Hospice Tree of Lights. And by way of background, years ago, the city partnered with various organizations, the Beautification Committee, the Hospice, um, various nonprofits, the Kwanis Club and the High School and so forth, and started the Seeds of Hope. And basically what that was, it was planting daffodil bulbs. So that was every fall, and in the springtime, the daffodils will bloom. And basically it was just an awareness to, um, cancer. Recently, there was just- the topic came up on whether or not we would like to participate with the Tree of Lights. And by way of background on that project, it basically started about three- twenty-three years ago. And it was a bereavement program that was sponsored by the Hospice. And, um, it was a way for those that have been affected by cancer, the loss of loved ones, basically helped them adjust during the holiday season. So that was really how it started. It has been, um, in, um, a tradition now in Stockton for the past twenty-three years, and I believe in Lodi, this would be the nineteenth year coming up. And, um, basically what's how- what happens is there is a program that is basically put together. There is some involvement with, um, our school district. There's an artwork competition. Um, there, the winner basically is displayed on the brochure. There's a program that, um, recognizes the city. It recognizes, um, music. If there's a Tiny Tuts program or a school program that would like to participate, there could be, um, we are hoping that this would happen right before our old-fashioned Christmas parade. And, um, as the actual lighting of the- of the tree would be conducted by someone who has lost a family member to cancer. And I think that's about it. There is also a marquee that is actually placed by the tree. And on that, they do list those donations that recognize those that were made in memory of, um, a loved one and/or in honor of a loved one. And, um, I think that's about it, unless there's specific questions on the actual, um, Tree of Lights. But, um, that's the- the general, um, program, um, on the event itself, yes.
You're saying the marquee's being placed next to the tree. I know we discussed this early, could you kind of elaborate a little bit? It's going to be done in a tasteful manner. I mean, the bottom line is, this is a community event, and it kind of draws our community together. I just want to make sure people understand this is not something coming from the outside to take away from that.
We are looking at, um, what- what happens is the Hospice actually will- would donate the actual lights, um, for the tree. They would actually buy all the lights. We would be using city resources to actually put the lights up onto the tree. Um, but there- the names on the marquee would actually show the donations, and it's- they don't go by person by person. Basically, it's a marquee there. So if I made a donation in memory of a loved one, then I can actually see that. And sometimes that is something that the family is involved in. Um, if I choose to bring my children and show that this was made in memory of someone or in honor of someone, so it is a family, um, event. I'm not sure how many of you have participated or actually witnessed the event in other communities, but, um, it is very tastefully done. It is there for the community. It does bring the community together. It gives them, those members that have been affected or, um, by cancer or have lost someone, um, just an opportunity to be involved. Sometimes that there have been some problems with, um, becoming somewhat reclusive, and this is just a way for them to experience. So again, this program initially started off as a bereavement-type program with the Hospice. And Hospice of San Joaquin actually services the Galt community. We do, um, provide support services to the Galt community, and we do have those that, um, actually receive the services as well.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from council members, Vice Mayor Powers?
Yes, Inez, you and I talked about this, so this comes as no surprise. But I just don't think that combining our Christmas activities with a fundraiser is the way to go. I, you know, I belong to a nonprofit, I know that we're having problems with money. But I'm just afraid that this is going to open a door or a can of worms for people every year to think that they should be the participating nonprofit that, you know, works with the City of Galt for the Christmas. I see the Christmas event as a city event that should just be, um, a city event. And I, uh, I really don't like the idea of a marquee out in front of our Christmas tree for- for a month with people's names on it and stuff. I'm one of five, that's my opinion. But I just think that it's not the place for, um, fundraising. So that's my opinion.
Inez, um, maybe you can share with us why other cities have done this, like Lodi, you said? This is the first time it's come up here, so I can understand why there would be questions and concerns.
Um, well, I haven't been actively involved with it. I've been just a spectator with the one in Lodi, have participated or actually, um, been, um, a guest also with some of the ones in Stockton at the Delta College and so forth. But basically, it's just a start to, they actually do the lighting as well. Um, it's- it's a beautiful tree, I mean, to see it, um, but, um, it's tastefully done. Um, and they actually light the tree right before they do their annual, um, Light Parade. And basically that starts the holiday season, I believe, in Lodi. So, um, I have not been actively involved with the program itself on this one. So it was just something that, because of our relationship with the Seeds of Hope before, it was something that came up recently, and we decided that we could bring it to the community of Galt. We saw this as just another item to bring during the holiday season. Um, I mean, I understand the comments and the concerns and so forth, but that really wasn't something that we looked at. We were thinking mostly to bring a, uh, tree to the community and, um, recognition of just the involvement with council, the association. But it really wasn't, um, I guess initially as a fundraising event. Although admittedly-
But that's the way I see it.
Admittedly, we have a tree and we have lights.
You know, and like, I don't want to sound like a spruce, but I just think that next year it's going to, and I, you know, we were talking about the parade, and I thought it just kind of got slipped in there, and that's my opinion.
I think one thing wasn't clear, that, uh, the- the lights on the tree, if I remember correctly, represent, um, a person who has passed away and their family is remembering them? Is that the way it's designed?
It's set up to recognize two things. One of them would be actually, um, in memory of, and there would also be the same light bulbs, but in a- in a different dollar amount in honor of, for someone who is still, um, with us. So the- the tree itself is decorated with all the different lights. So there is not a direct relationship between someone's donation and the actual, uh, light that's on the tree. So, um, depending on the level of support that the community provides to them, the tree will still look beautiful regardless of the amount of donations being made. So, um, that's really it, kind of in a nutshell.
Uh, Councilmember Singleton, did you have a question? Or you want to say something?
Just listening quietly.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments or thoughts regarding this?
Was there any public comment on this?
I don't have any speaker sheets for this.
That's why I thought we were, it sounded like we were going in two separate directions here, so.
Mayor, I think just to clarify, the item on the agenda deals with the Lighting of the Night Parade Request. And I recognize that there's a reference in the staff report relating to this matter, but that's not actually the item that was presented for the council's consideration this evening. The item for discussion relates to the parade request.
That's it.
Right. There's two requests.
Councilman Singleton?
No, I was concurring.
Okay.
That's my understanding, because we went this way, and so...
Yeah, that's why I was a little concerned at that one.
Okay, so if I'm understanding this correctly, we are not deciding tonight on the Hospice program? I thought...
No, that's not up for your consideration. There was a reference in the staff report relating to the program, which existed last year and was contemplated to continue this year. If the council desires to continue it, or to continue the discussion and to give direction to staff, my recommendation would be that you place it on a future agenda for further discussion and direction. If there's not a desire to continue the discussion or provide direction, then my recommendation would be that we just move on with the balance of the staff report on the two requests for relating to the parade route, and that's the item for action this evening.
Can we move that as a separate item? The Hospice thing, and get that out of this language here?
I think that was what you were saying, is that something that would have to be placed on the agenda?
So do we have the motion, have it moved out of there, or...
Well, yeah, if the council wants to entertain a motion to direct that the item be placed on a future agenda for further discussion, consideration, you certainly can do that.
I'll make a motion that we bring this back in the future.
We have an issue, because we need to make a decision. We're moving forward with the Hospice unless there's an issue with the council, that they provide direction to staff. They're already getting ready to make brochures and other things, and so we can make a change now, but two weeks from now, it may be more difficult to make a change. And so if there's more than one council member that's interested in not moving forward with that, then we'd like to hear that comment, those comments tonight from the council.
Okay, now, back to Mayor.
Okay, I, like I said, I just think it was thrown in there at the last minute. I'm sorry, they're on a deadline, but I don't prefer it being thrown in. I'm one person, like I said, if anyone else wants to speak up or go with it, but I...
Well, I tend to agree. It's almost like we're being shoved in our faces. I wish it would have been brought to us, say, for example, last meeting, so we'd had time to do some research on it. At this point, right now, you know, we've had a couple of days, but we haven't been able to really look into as much of, there's more to it than what I expected. And I would like to see it as a separate item myself.
I think what I heard the city manager say, though, that it would have to be decided tonight because of the deadline, or that two weeks is too late, so...
I think we need some direction tonight. Staff was moving forward, we'd never brought forth in the past, tree lighting ceremonies for the council is something we'd always planned at the staff level. And so, you know, it's our mistake that we should have brought it forward to council on an earlier date, and I apologize for that. But at this point, if the council's not interested in proceeding with it, then we just need to know that tonight, and we can move forward in a different direction.
Well, I was gonna ask Councilman Shelton, what were you gonna, were we gonna suggest?
I don't know, I made a motion, and it got, we went sideways on it, so...
Well, I think our city is...
I'm waiting to hear what you had to say, I'd like to hear what you had to say.
Excuse me, Councilman Singleton, I think the city attorney interrupted by saying this was not an action item. Am I correct?
That is correct. I mean, the agenda's pretty clear, and it says the subject is the Lighting of the Night Parade Request.
But it's in the report.
In the staff report.
It is, and it's a big, huge paragraph.
Can we decide something on it tonight?
The staff report is not what governs under the Brown Act. What the public has noticed, the city council will be considering. What governs is what is placed on the agenda. And the items that have been placed on the agenda is the Lighting of the Night Parade Request, to consider the report regarding two different requests staff receive for the 2011 Lighting of the Night Parade, and provide direction to staff. That is what has been placed on the agenda, and that is what is open for the council's action this evening. As it relates to the issue relating to the Hospice and the city's participation, that is not an agendized item.
Okay, one more clarification.
Each individual council member can express an opinion without actually providing, doing an action, or moving forward. And that would be what I would request, is that council members be given an opportunity to talk about their opinion on the matter, and then I will make a decision from a staff perspective based on input or comments received by city council members.
Is that okay, city attorney?
Well, you're not allowed to take any motion. I think that to the extent that you want to express an opinion, the manager wants to act on that, I think that would be adequate.
I think what I'm hearing is this was sort of a decision made at staff level, as in the past. But because it is something new, it has obviously stirred up some concern from the council members. And the city attorney has said it's appropriate for us to express our feelings, which the staff then will take into account on their own separate, without this being a council action. So I think we've heard some comments and concerns, but are there any others that you'd like to share?
On the parade, yeah.
We're gonna get to the parade in a second.
I do want to share another comment on, city staff before have, like you said, done the lighting of the lights, but this is a change to it.
Okay.
That's true.
Is there another comment? Do you feel like you've gotten enough information, or city manager, for you to, you and your staff, to make a decision?
Not really.
Not really?
We've heard from one council member.
May I?
Please speak.
Okay.
Give me your opinion, sir.
Whether you want it or not, right?
I would do want it.
No, no. I believe that partnering up with the Hospice, I think it shows we have concerns. I am in favor of it. The reason I started to make a motion earlier was it sounds like we're kind of torn 3-2, or whatever, 2-3. Staff, I'll just let you know that if that's what the decision is made, I will support it. I think it shows that we are working together, we, you know, for individuals that have lost family members or close friends with the Hospice program, and I am comfortable in staff doing that. That's just my opinion.
Councilman Cruz, can you come in?
Well, like I said, I just want to make sure it's done in a tasteful manner, and Inez brought it up, and I am satisfied with what she brought.
Well, I'll give my comments then, unless someone else wants to perform it. I don't have a problem with doing this. I think Christmas is a time of emotions and caring and giving, and I'm sure that the staff look at it in that respect. My personal opinion is that it would be fine. Might even make my heart feel a little bit warmer. So that's, I think you've gotten some opinions now, city manager? Okay, so now, let's go back to the action item, which is the...
Armando can finish his report.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. I'm sorry, that was just information. To continue with the, to continue with what's the action in front of you, the first parade route request was made by the Lighting of the Night Committee. The committee is requesting the council consider the traditional parade route that runs through the west and east sides of Galt, and has been in place for the last 10 years. The second request received by staff is from the Shop Local group. They are requesting council consider a downtown parade. It would run through C Street, Fourth Street, F Street, and back to the market. Both parades will begin from the market grounds after the lighting of the night, or, excuse me, the lighting of the tree. They will pass in front of the event, and then continue on to their routes. And I'll take any questions regarding the routes, if you have any.
Okay, here we go. Questions, comments on the route of the parade?
Uh, I've reviewed both of these, and I gotta tell you, not satisfied with either one of them. The one we've had traditionally, it's been fun, it's been enjoyable, it's been extremely long. I think there's a happy medium here. The one Shop Local brought up, good idea. You concentrated it to one four-block area. I'd like to see it expanded. I'd like to see it covered both east and west side, but no longer an hour and a half. Have it terminate where it started, but cover the main streets of the city, so that people come to the parade, not the parade goes to the people. The idea is to bring the community together, not to delve it out as you need.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we do have a comment from the audience, which we should hear first. Let's see, Bu Cannon?
Good evening, council. I live on the east side of Galt, and I would like to say that my business has been actively involved in the Christmas parade for several years. And I'm not sure when the 10-year period started for this parade route, but I have just, in my short time of being involved in it, watched it grow and grow and grow. And I think that a parade is for the children, for the community. And when we have children involved in the parade, and it goes on and on and on, and we're asked not to deviate from the parade route, and children have to use the restroom, that it makes for difficulties. And I will say that, my child is one of the children that had to use the restroom one year. And I had to have her go in my car on the floor because she could not wait. And because of the route and where we were at, there was no bathroom to stop at. There was no house, the pizza guys did not allow us to use the restroom. And the police were saying, the CAPS people and the other people involved were saying, "Stay in the line, stay in the line." So I am one of the people on Shop Local saying, "Shorten the route." I am one of the people saying, "Bring it back to what is the heart of Galt. We will always have the west side, we will always have the east side, but we will always have the middle." And I believe that it needs to be centralized, and like Councilmember Cruz said, "Bring the people to the parade, not the parade to the people." And so I would like to see the parade route shortened. I think that we ask our businesses to be involved. We ask our diesel trucks, you know, hauling the cheerleaders to be involved. The price of gas is higher, and that we're asking for people to give and to give, and yet, we're extending and extending maybe beyond the reach of some. So I would like to see it go with the shorter route, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan. Where there, there's no other comments from the public, then we'll go back to the councilmembers, and I would ask you if you have any comments. Councilman Singleton, would you like to comment?
Uh, yes, I do. It has been longstanding tradition, the Lighting of the Night. I understand the parade route was a little long last year. I was in it, drenched in the water. But we had fun, and so did all the citizens of the community. Here's what I'd like to do, and I'm pretty sure from what it sounds like from Mark, he was going in the same direction, is I would like to see, because it sounds like two different parades. Am I right or wrong, Armando? Two different parades, one's gonna go one direction, one's gonna go the other? How's that gonna work?
Depending on which one, council...
Here's my suggestion, then. I would like to see the two groups get together and work together on a compromise. There's that key word, compromise, again. On a route that we think will not be too long, but yet not be too short. Something that we can work together on, because we are a community, we need to work together. Ms. Buchanan.
I'm sorry, I realize I only had a minute left, but in asking us to work together, Councilmember Singleton, I want to point out also that those of us who are meeting week after week at Shop Local, that is not our job. Some of us have jobs and families to tend to, and so to require us to come above and beyond what we are already doing may be outside of the limits of those who are asking for change. I had one other thought, and it came to me right as I sat down, but I've lost it. Please forgive me. Can you think of what my thought was? I'm sorry. I really did, it was profound, I promise.
We'll let you come back.
Yeah, you can come back.
Thank you.
If you think of it.
I understand people have jobs, as most of us do here in this room. But we make time. That's just a part of volunteering for your community, is making time to... You remembered, I guess.
It came back to me, I'm so sorry. I thought that the route that the Shop Local Committee was choosing did not give preference to specific schools, clubs, churches, organizations, and neighborhoods.
That who was given?
The route that Shop Local presented, which was the shorter route, did not give preference to specific organizations, churches, schools, businesses that cater to children, that kind of thing. And we did think that coupling with the Lighting of the Night, whether you go hospice or not, is still a wonderful thing, because it allows families to come out one night. Thanks for letting me come back.
Three times.
Okay, now we have an, excuse me, Deborah Wells and Patrice Morano. I'm sure we're all interested to hear what the public has to say. We'll have our turn.
Absolutely.
I didn't see what the route was or anything, but I knew it was before the board. I've never spoke to council before, so I want to take the opportunity, usually Patrice does. I know that the route was long last year, and the reason why it was long, because we had a lot of entries. We had over 50 entries, probably 45 showed up. One of the recommendations from the chief of police last year was, "Let's limit it. Limit the entries, and the parade won't be so long." That's where you get where it's so long, not necessarily where we're going in the route. It's always been a community event. Patrice and I are just two housewives that put this together. We're not businesses, we're not anything, we're just a community. It's taken upon ourselves throughout the years just to bring the communities together from the both sides, you know, of the fence, and we have a common ground. We come to them, instead of them come to us. And you guys have been on the parade, you've seen that. The joy's on the community's faces. A lot of homes have large families. They can't put the kids in the car, or have the means to do that, to come to the parade. A lot of elderly, you see them in their driveway, in their wheelchairs. You see the pets out there. People have dinner parties around our parade. They call us and say, "What is the date?" They want to decorate their house. So the community really wants to be a part of it, and they've always liked the parade coming to them. It is a long for us that are in the parade, but it's not long for the community to see it, because it just goes past their house. So I, my recommendation is to keep the parade route as we submitted, and maybe just shorten or limit the number of entries.
Just to share with the parade route, where it arrived was, it's been probably 12 years, to be honest with you. The parade actually started on the northeast side of Galt from young families that lived in the Elliott Homes. Over a period of time, we've now gone to the police department for guidance and for chaperone, and along with them, and the fire department, and other city, they actually helped us with this parade route over 10 years ago. Safety was a big issue, the size of the floats, could they make it through the streets? So the reason we haven't changed the route was, it's because of the input that the chief gave us for safety, to make sure that we could be covered under the insurance through the city and Bella, through Parks and Rec. So we haven't changed it for that reason. Also, to keep in mind, when you are on the west side, we do have trains are active. So we have timed this to a science. I know people probably don't even have an idea what goes involved here. But if we roll right at 6:00, we do get over the railroad tracks, coming back the second time over without missing the train. It's just to kind of, so there's a lot involved. And then how do you know what neighborhoods do you cut out? Because this parade route was planned, knowing that it was within walking distance to certain areas. And you are correct, we did pass by the elementary schools prior to, and the reason before was the PTAs always offered Santa Claus for each school. So every child's school knew that Santa was gonna be in there. We've never crossed over, we had two Santas at one time. Again, back to a lot of being involved with. But over a period of time, a lot of your PTAs have failed. Their groups have gotten smaller and smaller, and they could no longer open up their gymnasiums and offer Santa. They had no manpower, no money. And the economy last year, we were wondering how many entries we'd get, but we didn't give up. We still put it together, and we had 50. So I know she's talking about gas prices, but we had 50 entries last year, and we were like, "Oh, my goodness." And we always give the entries prior to the parade rolling to the police chief for his approval, to make sure that, you know, he knows how many entries, what the entries are, who's driving them, so... to make sure that, you know, he knows how many entries, what the entries are, who's driving them, so. Uh, yeah, who knew, who knew how to run a parade, huh? (laughing) But a lot involved, just to share with. We're open to, I think what Inez is saying, um, I was just listening to her about the lighting of the tree, our former mayor, Guide of Cancer, Mr. Gora. So that would be something that, you know, I, I, I think is a good thing, because we can't forget about these people who helped us get to this point. So in that respect, I, I, I have to say, you know, parade combining with it, I, I personally don't have a problem with it. Um, everyone, I think, in this room's probably been touched or someone has been lost by cancer. Is there any questions that you have? I mean, we're open to, we're just explaining that the route that we have, that we followed, were instructed to us by the police chief, the prior city manager, and the fire department. And we did have numerous meetings, so.
Are you thinking about then, this year, making the parade shorter, not having as many entries?
Um, I'm willing, I, I met with them last year, because I know that part of the, last year they brought to the attention of changing the parade route to make it for the businesses, and Deborah and I felt strongly that there's three hundred and sixty-five days in the year for Deborah. And one day, if families can come out and have a good time, visit with their neighbors and friends, and it doesn't cost you anything, then we've done a good thing.
At least there's three hundred and sixty-four days to maybe plan a special night for them to do that. Maybe even after the parade, because the parade, I know kicks off the community and that, um, Christmas spirit, the loving, all of those emotions that you had said earlier, it kicks that off. So maybe they can tag on to it, maybe even the next weekend or something, because then it's already opened it up, I, I think. And it's kind of separated it, then we've achieved two things. It's the community got to see the parade, but then they can do the Shop Local where the community could come to them.
I know, it's gotta be a happy medium. We're just cheering for them, yeah.
That was my point earlier.
Now, before the council, uh, continues to speak, was there anybody else in the audience at this time that wanted to come up and speak? Uh, I'm sorry, Councilman Singleton, I cut you off, but we, we've had people that wanted to submit their requests late. So, and we definitely want to hear from you, so before we proceed-
Should we ask, I mean, with the chief, cause again, um, he has to give me the green light to roll. We, we don't roll the parade without his permission, and he also has the capabilities of stopping the parade.
Not excited in three hours.
Due to, yeah, due to bad weather, he's the one who calls it, too.
Yes or no? I mean, that's what he's done in the past, if it's, if, in the past, when the weather was too bad, and we wait for that call, we get a call from you, then we're at a halt, we're done.
That is one of the items on, yeah, for action.
Actually, if I-
Really do still come through.
If I can address that, uh, Chief Bowden is new, uh, to the City of Galt this year. He has no, he has had no input in the parade route, um, that has been approved in past years. Um, he does not, this will be his first parade, so, you know, he has reviewed the parade. He has, uh, spoken to his lieutenants. They understand that we've done it every year, and have informed them that we can continue that. So, um, I, I would take the questions, uh, regarding the route.
Okay, what's more, is there anybody else in the audience that wants to speak before we continue?
I'll look on answering.
Well, I'm Ann Ulrich, I'm one of the chairpersons of the Shop Local Committee, so I thought I probably should speak. Um, it is definitely not our intent, and that was not, part of the plan was to in any way, shape, or form, take over the parade. Um, we would be more than thrilled (laugh) to not be in charge of the parade part of it, and, and, so, um, if we can reach some kind of compromise. Our, um, goal was not just to promote the businesses, but to promote a sense of community in having one event where we had the people come to the parade, which is, uh, Councilman Cruz has already said. Um, a couple of the other reasons that we gave in our, um, report to, to staff was that the, um, just the times we're living in right now, as far as, I know it's costly by time, we have spent police, um, hours, uh, staff hours. Um, the closure of the freeway is bound to be an issue this year. Those are some of the reasons that we, um, put into our, our, uh, recommendations. But again, it was not our intent to, to take over. I, you know, greatly appreciate the, the job that's been done in the last, um, ten, twelve years. Um, and to those of you that participated, especially and been on it for, in the rain and all that. But, um, anyway, if we can meet and come to some type of a, a quick conclusion, and, and have it be, um, you know, good for both parties, that's great. Again, it's not, it wasn't supposed to be a, uh, any kind of a, an argument or a takeover of anything. It was just, it was just to make it a, a, a community event.
Now, Shop Local meets in the morning at eight thirty?
Yeah, we meet every mo- every Wednesday at Gary's Deli at eight thirty in the morning.
Would, um, Patrice, are you still out there? There you go, you moved. Uh, would either of you be available to come at eight thirty? Or both? Yes, I'd even buy your coffee for you. Okay.
Well, I would recommend, and I, although that's necessarily my position, but I'll say it anyway.
We're kind of free.
Agreed, okay, right. That we then go ahead and meet, and then if we can be on the agenda again in two weeks, and, and come up with hopefully some type of compromise, that'll make your job easier and ours as well.
Sounds like something Councilman was gonna recommend.
(laughing)
Kind man.
Make it quick, please.
Al.
Want you to consider who the parade is for. Is it for the businesses? I don't think so. Is it for the children? I believe so. The parents that have the children really have a hassle taking them out. Now, I know it's convenient, it's a short parade, but think who this parade is for. For the city of Galt with the community involved, and yes, the parade has always come to them. I know it's a longer one, but I'm telling you, if you want the community to remain together, they aren't gonna all come over here on the west side. You've done that for years, and it hasn't worked. You have to go to them if you want to do it. And it's for the children and the parents. I'm out of here.
Okay, all right.
Answer that, Al, real quick, uh, it's for everybody. That's what the parade's for, the community, okay?
Uh, Councilman Singleton, are, are you needing to make more comments? I mean, it sounds like-
That was originally what my suggestion was gonna be, was to compromise. It's real simple. It's what I've said since I've been in office. It's easy to compromise, you just have to be willing to give a little bit. I know it's not a takeover, I know it's, you know, i- it's rough having such a long parade, cause I was in it, in a, in a wool coat last year. Um, but I stuck it out, and it was long, but you know what? You guys can get together and compromise, please, and then bring it back to us, I would sure appreciate that. Cause, uh, I, I, I don't think, uh, I want to separate this and make it a, how do I say it nicely? Uh, you know, a kind of match. I don't want fighting going on, I want you guys to get along, that's the way we do in this community, cause we're good at that, and we're good at compromise. So I, I, I have faith in you guys, that you can come back to us with a, uh, a desired route that is good for both, uh, uh, persons that are involved in it, uh, that is good for both the community, children, and businesses. Uh, that'll benefit everybody. Okay?
Councilman Shelton, did you-
I was just gonna agree, and, you know, I, some of us have been out there in a blazing rainstorm, and we know how, how, how you felt, okay? It is for the community, and that I think a compromise can be-
Would it be, um, well, as far as anything, did you wish to add something?
Yes, I do wish to add something. Um, I do too agree that it should be on, I, I would like it to be on both sides, because I don't think that we should, after all these years, um, not have it on the east side anymore. But, uh, I beg to differ with one of the reasons why the parade is so long. I think it's too long, I think it should only be a couple of hours. But there are major, I was in that parade, and there are major streets that you can't get those trucks around. And I've seen the policemen out there backing them up, and moving them out, and blah, 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 and blah, blah, blah. So what I think is some good, straight, thorough fairs on both sides is a better idea.
That's a good point. Uh, Councilman Cruz, do you want to add something?
Actually, I was gonna make a motion.
Uh, before you do that, let me ask, uh, City Attorney, uh, if, what would be the appropriate action? Because the way it's written, we are saying yes or no on the route. So what would be the appropriate action at this point?
Um, to, I think the consensus was to continue the matter, so I'd recommend you entertain a motion to continue. And then, uh, if a revised request comes to the council before the next meeting, then you could vote on that revised request.
And would that be for both items, as well as the item regarding the police department?
Yes, it would be.
So we would entertain a motion to continue this item to the next meeting? Is there a motion to that effect?
I motion to continue this item until a compromise is in met, we bring it to the next meeting.
Al, second.
We have a first and a second?
Let me just make a, a comment, cause I think it's gonna be important for the people that meet tomorrow morning to get a, get understanding of what the council is asking them to do. Because each of them has very different opinions about the, what the parade should look like. And so I think from what I've heard, is there's a consensus from council that the parade, um, kind of include the best of both worlds, in other words, include a downtown component, but not neglect the east side of the city, that it still go on both sides of the city, um, along the traditional route, but that traditional route be shortened somewhat, so instead of a three and a half hour parade, you have a two hour parade, or something in that neighborhood. Is that kind of the direction from, from the council, and that the group can get together and hash out exactly what the route might look like, where it's gonna go, and all that kind of stuff, with input from staff on, like, uh, Vice Mayor said, about turning radiuses and making sure that it, it works as far as that's concerned. Um, and we can certainly accomplish that.
That's right.
I'm confident that they can do that. I had one thought. Just we're not doing like we used to do in the fire service in this community, I don't know if anyone remembers. The fire department used to drive every day. We started on Sunday and ended on Saturday, and drove almost every street in this community, along with the police department.
Yeah.
It was fun, but it was long, and it was hard.
Yeah. And but then, I think it was mostly the fire department.
It was fire and police, right, yeah.
Yeah, we'd have all three of them.
And then there was a few other people, but, yeah.
Okay, back to business. We have a first and a second.
Mm-hmm.
Call for the vote, roll call. Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Uh, so we will continue this to the next council meeting, uh, hopefully. And I would extend this invitation to anybody that wants to meet in the morning at eight thirty at Gary's Deli, that has their own thoughts, uh, to come there. It's open to the public, right, Ann? No food. No food, you can buy food, okay. Was there anything else, Armando, we just dropped you out of this.
Thanks for hanging up.
I'll, I'll be at that meeting tomorrow morning at eight thirty, and I'm sure a representative from the police department will also.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Payne?
Yes, sir.
May I ask, uh, now, the hospice thing, we tabled that, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
We're, you're saying no, you're saying yes. Who, what have we done with, not you. What have we done with the hospice thing? Cause I wanted to also just very quickly mention that I also had a father die from, uh, lung cancer, so I wasn't necessarily against this, but I want to know more about it, that's all. Okay? Uh, so what have we done with that?
Well, the way I remember it, uh-
I just gotta get clear, like, get it clear where, where it's going.
Okay, trying. Um, the city manager was interested in getting our opinions. We didn't vote on anything, and at the staff level, then, they would take our opinions and make a decision whether or not to, to offer the hospice tree lighting or not.
Based on the, based on the opinions, um, there's nothing that I've heard that would cause us to change the plan that's stated in the staff reports. Does that make sense?
No, but that's okay, I'll, I'll think about it overnight and talk with you tomorrow.
Okay. Was there anything else before we move to the next item?
I'm sure there is, but I'll just be quiet and move on.
Well, you know, you're welcome to speak.
Oh, sure.
Okay, okay, Finance Department, approval of charts of services with community, individual, or partial community benefits.
Thank you, good evening. This evening, staff is, um, asking council to approve the recommended chart of services for various departments, and who have identified the services that are provided as either, um, having a benefit to the community, to individual, or partial community. By way of background, one of the goals that council identified during the strategic planning process back in January was to improve the financial stability of the city and maintain the reserves. One of the goals that was, um, presented was to develop a process of identifying the various programs and services that, um, the departments provide, and identify them whether or not they are on an individual benefit or community benefit, or, um, a portion of both. Um, the definitions of those were actually accepted by council back in, um, at the June two thousand and eleven meeting. And, um, at that meeting, council also requested that staff come back and actually present the different charts of services. There are three departments that, um, or actually four departments that are not presented on the charts of services, and those are basically provide services, internal services, they do not provide a direct service to the public, so they're not included in this. And those four departments are the city manager's office, city attorney, human resources, and information technology. There are no costs associated with the charts of services, but what it will do, it will, um, assist us in when we bring back the, um, the fees that are being charged, we can identify whether or not it, the benefit is being received by an individual, or the community at large, or somewhere in between those. So it just, it will assist us in presenting what that cost of service is, and whether or not council will want to charge that full cost of service, or possibly subsidize it from other, um, some other type of revenue source. Um, so there are various charts in here, there's one for the city clerks department, and some of the services that are presented are notary services, public records requests, um, the planning, community development department, some addressing, some appeals processes, there's a list of various, um, services that are being provided for the finance department. We, um, provide a notice of special tax, if someone wants a payoff calculation for an assessment district or a Melrose district, um, various permits that are issued as well. For the Parks and Recreation Department, they have a list of various, um, um, services that they provide. Some of these special events are the bus, the bus rodeo, the school truck show, um, the strawberry festival, farmer's market. And, uh, the police department has a couple of items there as well, the CAPS program, the firearm storage, they have the neighborhood, um, COPS program, um, or POP program, excuse me. Um, and Public Works, there's various services, uh, that they provide as well, whether it's, um, the meter installation, the filling of the swimming pool, and so forth, so. There are various services are provided by the various departments at this point. Um, staff members are asking that council approve the list of services that are provided, and we will be coming back and actually making a relationship between the service that's provided and the cost for that service. So if council has any questions, I'd be more than glad to try to address those this evening.
Council, questions, comments?
She wore a dress.
I have a comment. I hope you like tonight.
(laughing)
Um, I, under Parks and Rec, um, I think the Fourth of July celebration is a community benefit, not a partial community benefit. So I would ask that that be changed. See, I read them all.
Is that the only one you had to comment on?
No, I've got about fifteen, or eighty-five more, no.
(laughing)
We do recognize that that has a community benefit, and I'm not, um, totally clear, um, recall the, um, individual benefit on that one. So unless there's a, a reason you can think of that, we, I mean, it seems like it would be a community benefit in overall.
I didn't do it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm unsure regarding what was taken into consideration for the individual benefit.
And, and what we did go through, we can certainly make that change. What we went through is sometimes if, if, um, there was an individual benefit, and yet there was community benefit, but there was a little bit of both, we didn't try to say, oh, there's a ninety-five percent community benefit and a five percent individual at this point. When we actually come back with the related fees, then we'll kind of, we will present that there, the majority of the benefit lies with the community, so we do feel it would be appropriate for council to subsidize some of those fees for those services that are being provided. So we can certainly make that adjustment, but that was kind of the logic we were going through. And we tried to evaluate each type of service, and based on the definitions that were, um, previously accepted, so, thank you for your comments.
I would throw out, uh, also for comment, the extravaganza, you've got it as a individual, um, benefit, and it actually is the Easter egg hunt that's open to the whole community. Um, I would at least say it would be partial community benefit, if not a community benefit. Thank you. Any other opinions, comments? Okay? And so, the recommended action for this item. Would you read that, please, Donna?
Recommended action, approve the recommended charts of services for identified departments with identification of community, individual, or partial community benefits.
Okay, is, with the changes-
With the two, with the two adjustments that have been presented this evening.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second, roll call, both, please. Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, next item, uh, we have any communication, any written communication from council members, then we will adjourn the regular meeting and, uh, go to the redevelopment agency. Roll call, please. Board members, Powers?
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Public comments? I don't have any. We have no comment sheets, consent, agenda? Did you read that?
Item A, minutes of meeting of September sixth, two thousand and eleven. B, redevelopment agency warrants. And C, treasures report for period ending July twenty-eleven, two thousand and eleven.
Are there any questions or comments on the agenda, on the consent calendar? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'm motioning to accept the consent calendar.
Al, second.
We have a first and a second, roll call, please. Board members Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. So we will adjourn from redevelopment, and reconvene to the regular Galt City Council meeting with the city clerk's report, please.
I don't have any staff reports tonight, but I have a few items on the calendar. September twenty-second is the Commission on Aging at five fifteen, at Chabola, Sixth and Chabola Avenue, in the California Room. On October third, the City Council Youth Committee meeting is at six-thirty in the City Hall Community Room. And October fourth is the regular City Council meeting at seven o'clock here at City Hall. On October twelfth, it's the Parks and Rec Commission meeting at seven o'clock here at Council Chambers. October thirteenth is the Planning Commission meeting, six-thirty here at Council Chambers. And that brings us to the last October meeting for City Council, seven o'clock here at Council Chambers.
Normally, the youth committee meets at six, did they change their time?
Wow, good question, it does say six-thirty. Well, there's a disclaimer at the bottom.
Okay, all right. They made pretty changes in the youth council meeting. Okay, staff comments?
I'd like our Public Works Director to give some good news about the central interchange.
For those of you that may not have noticed, I'm very pleased to announce that this morning, actually, this morning, we opened up the new northbound C Street on-ramp. It's pretty neat to get to drive across, you get a good feeling about what the ultimate intersection's going to look like, you can see across where the new A Street Bridge is going to be. I want to thank the public for their patience. I know the roundabout way going down Crystal wasn't very convenient, but at this point, the new on-ramp is open, and it just shows a good progress. It was done within the time schedule that we allowed, tigered, so we're making a lot of progress.
Yay. Any other comments from staff? City manager? Did you have a comment you wanted to make?
I think that's it, we got the League California Cities Conference this week, Wednesday through Friday, many of us will be going for that, so looking forward to that, bringing back some good ideas for the city in the future.
Absolutely. Comments by council members? I'm going to start down at the other end with Councilman Shelton.
There is one item I'd like to add for events going on in the community, it was omitted for some reason. Public Safety Advisory Committee is this coming Monday night at six PM, and it's at the Galt Police Department.
And you'll call me, right?
Uh, yes, I will.
It's a little joke between us.
Councilman Cruz?
You're catching me in the middle of writing it. Actually, just wanted to give Greg and his group kudos. I mean, I drove this afternoon, very nice, very smooth.
Is that it?
That's it.
Vice Mayor? No comments? Councilman Singleton, any comments?
Just real quick, a friend of mine, I just want to give my condolences to the Casado family. Ron passed away this last Saturday, and I'd like to extend my condolences, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I just would add that Friday, I'll be going to Stopin' to get an update on the A-Train and the High Speed Rail, see where that's going. If there's no other information or business, we will declare this meeting adjourned.